Still here, 6:02. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:02. I will roll call vote it, miss, or roll call Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Dean. Mrs. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Martin.
Oh, here.
You're still here. Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Osowski. I am still here. All right, if we could all stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving on to President's remarks. Is your phone still on silent? As per usual, please place all cell phones on silent. It was me. I know I'm guilty of it sometimes. It was like in church, right? And then your phone rings. It's like, oh, oh. Right when like he's praying or something. I, um... Yeah, I don't have any remarks. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda of the July 7th regular meeting as presented? Moved by Mr. Osowski, seconded by Mrs. Johnson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I want you to know if, um, possibly, um, if we can look at, put something on the agenda, if we can actually look at the bylaws. But to actually just remove the, uh, the key here of school board's members, like the executive roles. Can we just remove it all together?
I think we would have to do like a bylaw change which requires a first reading and a second reading. I believe that's the way the bylaw has to be changed to remove. So you're saying to remove the three-year stipulation?
Yes. You let me, I'm just, you know, because it's, we're discussing this.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think because, I think that, but it is because right now it's building, it's building some type of way right now.
Yeah.
It's building, you know what I'm saying? And it's like if we like remove it and then we won't, you know what I'm saying, have this, you know what I'm saying? Awkward, I must say, because some people, I know you're feeling awkward. I'm just putting myself.
I get it. All right. Listen, I felt awkward about it when I was approached. Because I remember the spirit of the bylaw, because I helped, I was part of that bylaw committee. Well, we all, we did, each board member sat in, you know, when we weren't in quorum and then reviewed bylaws. And the spirit of it was to not have somebody in the same seat, to give other people the opportunity. It was not my desire. I didn't seek to stay another year. I, I almost said no. So, yeah, I think we could, but I think we have to do it. I think we have to write a new bylaw, have a first reading of it, and then a second reading, and then pass it. Am I correct, Mr. Whit? So we can put it on the August agenda. We can do a first reading.
But it can't be done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I just, you know, it just, you know, it's just fresh in the mind.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. All right. A call to the audience, public participation regarding agenda items. Okay, hearing none. All right, presentations. Oh, you guys are on the hot seat. 2025 Capital Bond Project Update and Recommendation for Architectural Engineering Services.
Actually, I'm gonna go ahead and do a presentation first.
Oh.
No, it's the, I'm gonna do the update part.
Okay.
And then we'll get to the recommendation.
Okay, so Mr. Whit's gonna provide an update, and then we're gonna put Paul on the hot seat. You thought you were, you done with me?
He's used to it.
He's used to me now. He's not afraid of me anymore.
So I just wanted to give a overview of the, we kind of talked about like the potential to do some things different from an oversight standpoint. They just had some expressed concerns, um, from the 2021 Capital Bond Project. We're on this right now. Do you have it?
Just like, do I need to be on that screen? It's like the first thing that I, oh, okay, I thought it was the, it's the, okay.
No, no, it's a real quick presentation, or else I wouldn't have done it. It's July.
Start the timer, three minutes.
It's July, so. And so I just wanted to give a overview. We do have Mr. Wills and Mr. Steiner here tonight as well to kind of update us as to where we're at with the recommendation for architecture, architect and engineers for the project. But as we move through this project, I did want to lay out a couple different options and then kind of just informally get some feedback from the board as to oversight of the project. Option one, if you want to advance the slide. Option one is really the approach we took on the last one. And I know there's some different views as some individuals have expressed not having, or at least feeling like they didn't have enough input at different times in the process. But option one reflects what we did last time, where we had a design project team that included the owner's rep, the architect and engineering firms, the construction management firm, and members of district and building administration. Then almost with very few exceptions where there was timeline concerns that arose unexpectedly that could have either significantly drove up cost or delayed the startup of projects. And again, that was few and far between that that happened over the course of the 2021 bond project. We took a committee of the whole approach where we brought things to the board workshops, where the board wasn't asked to act on anything, and instead there was presentations provided, then opportunities for discussion and feedback. And then ultimately, uh, the recommendation then came to the full board at a regular or occasionally a special meeting depending on, again, circumstances. And then sometimes there was a second presentation, potentially to respond to some questions and concerns or follow-up that needed to be done from the committee of the whole. And then there was a recommendation and a vote. So that's the option one. A slight variation of that would be option two, which we would have a steering committee that would include the owner's representatives, superintendent, the facilities and operations director, two designated board members, two to four designated community members at large, which we would have to really pursue. We could do that in a variety of ways. And then other design project team members on an ad needed basis might present or be a part of those steering committees. And the plan would be that those steering committee would meet, and that's the asterisks up there, would meet monthly or every other month. Prior, ideally, they would meet prior to a board meeting that we have on the books. And that's just to try to work to accommodate everybody's schedules as much as possible. Trying to do it on an evening when most people are here already within that group. And I think it's important on this one that the arrows, as you see, work both ways. The design project team under this option would work potentially go back to the steering committee depending on certain things, or the steering committee, it would just flow from the steering committee on down to the Board of Education ultimately, where the format would be regular or special meeting, presentations and recommended vote. And again, it's noted there that design project team meets weekly or biweekly once our projects are underway within the regular workday traditionally.
What do you say within the regular workday? Talking about nine to five?
Usually we start way before nine.
Eight to.
And sometimes we.
Eight to midnight.
Go after five, but yeah, the primary workday I would say is eight to four, four thirty is when those meetings would typically take place within that timeframe. This last bond project, we most often met like around 12:30, one o'clock. It's when we met most often.
Then that's the standard, like you guys create like a standard time, like weekly?
Yes, and once we created it, we pretty much set biweekly meetings every other week. And then at certain phases in the project where there's a lot going on, sometimes we end up meeting every week. Then next up is option three, which is a variation of that. And that is we'd have the same steering committee that would work in conjunction with the design project team. And then even under this approach, we would still look to bring things whenever possible, unless there's some very unique circumstances, to the committee of the whole, where that would be a workshop format, where there'd be opportunities for presentation and discussion and feedback. And then finally, we would look at the recommendations that ultimately require board action would all come to a regular or special meeting. And so those are the three options kind of laid out. And I, again, I understand there were some concerns expressed from the 2021 bond, so I wanted to take a look at some different approaches to see where the comfort level of the board is. And once we have like this informal direction, that's how we'll plan to proceed until we're told otherwise.
Uh, Mr., we just want to say thank you for presenting us with these different actions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will, I'll reiterate that. Thank you for hearing us. You know, we, we, um, we kind of, we appreciate that you heard our concerns. And I personally like, I, option three, I like the committee of the whole workshop thing because it does give us the opportunity to really look at things that we don't, you know, we're not in construction, right? And so we look at things and we go, huh? And that gives us the opportunity to ask the experts those questions. And it gets, it makes the vote, you know, then the following meeting a little bit easier. So thank you. Because we have a little more knowledge. I said I know way more about construction than I ever thought I would know. All right.
And the steering committee approach can definitely work. The key is gonna be if we go with that direction. And ultimately, we could look to do this as soon as the August board meeting, where we would have the board take action to designate board members. And then if we're gonna go with an option that includes a steering committee, we can also begin to put something out to members of the community to kind of see if there are individuals who would be interested in serving such a role.
Mr. Bailey?
Does the steering committee meetings consider open meetings?
No.
How can you restrict?
Because it's, because one.
Well, I would just say we wouldn't post the meetings, no.
Again, how can you do that?
Because it's not a board meeting.
As long as two board members that would be present.
Right.
Committee meetings are not held to the Open Meetings Act guidelines because there are no decisions being made. Before you go on, Mr. Bailey, I have a question for you. Is your video camera setting on the table next to you and not across the room where it normally is?
It is.
Do you recall many years ago when you first started video recording these meetings in spite of the fact that lawyers have told you you shouldn't? That it was an action of this board that told you you could not record from the board table because now you're acting as a board member and not a citizen? I'm gonna ask you to move your video recording, or I'm gonna be forced to call for an adjournment of this meeting.
Did you think this out?
I absolutely thought this out. You continue to defy the wishes of this board with recording the meetings to begin with. But we specifically passed resolution when Ms. Gabachi was president forbidding you from recording from the table because you are not recording now as a citizen, which you insist is your right. You are recording as a board member.
Again, did you think this out?
I absolutely thought this out. I don't take action. I don't, I don't take action that I didn't think of. I'm gonna ask you to just remove it from the board table.
Where would you like me to put it?
You could set it up in the back where you typically set it up.
Set it up if you need.
Okay. I came in late, remember?
I.
Okay.
I understand.
Where would you like it, Mr. Pridemore?
The table across the room, is that okay with you? Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Bailey.
You can go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent Board Members. In your board packet, you have three documents. The first one is the recommendation letter from Plant Run Roadpoint relative to assisting the district identifying the architect and engineer for the 2025 bond project. With me this evening is Mr. Jim Steiner, who is the program manager for Plant Run Roadpoint. Proud Redford Union grad, we're not gonna mention the year, but.
Two thousand.
Was one of the class reunions, no. Also in your board packet, what you have is the three overviews from the presentations from the three firms. From a processing standpoint, the board's desire is to receive proposals from various firms. Those firms were French, King Scott Associates and Fanning Howie Associates. Those interviews were conducted in person on June 10th. And again, represented by the board by Mrs. Pridemore. So thank you for your time and effort for that, as well as our administration team and ourselves at Plant Run Roadpoint. The purpose of the interviews were really to allow each firm to present its qualifications relative to K-12 experience, its staff members, its proposed fee structure, its approach to mechanical electrical plumbing. So again, the major part of this $44 million bond is mechanical electrical plumbing systems going forward. Once those interviews were completed, the district's administration team did reference checks from peer to peer from that perspective. Also, I think it'd be important to hear from Mr. Jim Steiner, who's got extensive work with both French and Ignite. So with that, I'm gonna turn over him about the process that we're gonna go through with this bond. Because there's a lot of mechanical electrical plumbing, a lot of existing conditions, I thought it'd be helpful for Mr. Steiner to take a minute and talk about that process. Again, coming back to the board multiple phases, so with that, Mr. Steiner.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Good evening, everyone. With respect to French, worked with them in my past life, starting with in the mid 90s. So very familiar with them, most recently Gross Point, Southfield. With respect to the mechanical electrical engineer, I think there's been a lot of discussion on that. The proposed partner with French would be Ignite. I've had very good experience with them and success with them on the west side of the state. They were, both of the partners who started that firm were the lead mechanical and electrical engineers for a major design architectural firm based in Kalamazoo in Grand Rapids. So, very good success with them. They made a call to me about three, four years ago, said that they're starting their own firm and would certainly appreciate our recommendation to other architectural firms. So we're very familiar with them. They're young and they're aggressive. They know their business, and we think that they would be a very good complement to French, given the complexities of the mechanical electrical systems here and the major dollars that are involved. So we think we have a good partnership there.
So kind of in conclusion of that process, so again, I mean, nothing against King Scott Associates. They've been in business for over 100 years. They do focus primarily on K-12. If you take a look, their proposed fee structure was 7%. So again, a little bit higher percentage than French Associates, which was 5.9%. So they're actually maintaining the current fee rate from the previous bond. Again, Fanning Howie, also a great firm, 40 years in the business, predominantly K-12. They actually had a fee range approach from six and a half to seven and a half percent going forward. But again, ultimately, you see on page two, the recommendation letter is why French and Ignite. So as I mentioned, they've got a successful working relationship with the district from an architectural lens. They are utilizing Ignite Engineering, and so as Mr. Steiner mentioned, he's worked with them specifically over the last four years. I'm currently working with French and Ignite on another $40 million bond program. They do take the time to walk through the buildings with the facilities team, with the administration team. And interested board members like to look at what boilers look like before and after, to really go through and understand what is there. And then they take it through schematic design, design development, and construction documents. They also use this software called Matterport, which does a 360-degree review of all the spaces within each of the facilities. They also use Revit and AutoCAD also for their production of documents, if you will. Again, the French has confirmed that they're proposing the same team members. So again, that's switching out the project managers. They have agreed again to the current fee structures, and they're ready to sign the previous terms and conditions from the engagement from previously. So with that, there's actually two other parts. If you take a look at the overall bond, there's roughly $10.8 million of roofing. Again, that may be considered to be a design prime opportunity. Again, welcome input from the board at the August board meeting of that approach, where the district would hire a roofing designer specifically and not pay the 5.9%, but something different or less going forward. And there's also $2.9 million of site work. So right now, French does not have a civil engineer or a roofing consultant within their proposed team. We'd recommend that the board hire them directly. So if it's an OHM, if it's another civil engineer that has extensive experience in Wayne County, we think that'd be beneficial for discussion at that August board meeting. So with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to President Pridemore, Superintendent Whit and the board for any questions or considerations relative to the recommendation for French Associates and Ignite for the architectural services for the 2025 bond.
Thank you, Ms. Wills, and thank you for explaining the, the second part, that last little sentence of that. Because I had highlighted that on mine at home. I was like, wait, what are we meaning here? So I appreciate that. I, I do want to give Mr. Thomas Siders a moment because he just maybe to give, express his feelings because he's the one who has to work with these people the most closely. I know because I was part of the email chain that he, you know, what, I know how he, where he stands.
Somebody gave you a microphone?
I know, so.
That red light would, that red light will never go off. Thank you, Ms. Pridemore. As our discussions and our interviews went forward, we had the three firms that came in. I was, the second time we've been presented to by King Scott, and that seemed like nice people, just not overly impressive to me. The other, the other two candidates, Fanny Howie and French, French obviously we had a baseline we're familiar with. I was happy with the work that they did. They were easy to work with. I was not happy with the MEP side of it, their structural side of it, some other components of their, their work. Fanning Howie scared me a little bit as they're a national firm that's just moving back into the state of Michigan. Just getting back into K-12, they had, they had left the K-12 arena for a while. They're trying to get back into it, but their pricing didn't reflect that as far as I was concerned. So my ultimate, and also I sent out to their own references, I sent out to Fanny Howie the references that they provided to us. I didn't get a single response back from the five or six emails that I sent out. So I don't know if people are just busy or if that's a reflection upon their, their, their work or their impression.
I did also send out a, to one inquiry to a district that I knew was working with Fanny, Fanning Howie currently. And that was Southfield Schools. They have a lot of projects going on right now. Their response from the superintendent in Southfield was positive. But I would say the differentiator for me with French and this recommendation is not only the fee structure, but it's, I was very, very impressed with Ignite. And what stood out with them the most, and Miles was able to verify this in his inquiries, is that they have districts that they completed their project three, four plus years ago that are still getting assistance from Ignite as far as when there's something in the system that might be nuanced and they're still trying to figure it out and those type things. As far as setting temperatures in certain areas of the building and everything else. Ignite still has access to their systems and is still helping troubleshoot any issues that might arise and still working with them as like a real partner. And that was reiterated by the people. Ignite not only shared that they provide that level of service, that was verified in what Miles was able to seek out.
So ultimately, my recommendation based upon those factors was French. As I said, the architectural side of things, they were very responsive to me, my questions. The side that they weren't, their subcontractors were to their detriment. And they saw that also and no longer are working with that company that was involved with that, a couple of those subcontractors. So seeing that they were willing to make that change, I felt comfortable with the next, the next bond working through there with them.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
Um, how was your interview with them? What was your feel like?
So I, I will say I missed the French interview because I was at the doctor. And, but I will, I did not feel like Fanning, I didn't like their pricing. Like the fact that it's based on how much each project is. So like one project, we could pay, you know, this percent, but another project we could pay. I like a nice even number because then we know how to plan, right? And then I felt like the other company, what's the other company, King Scott? I felt like they didn't really get what we were trying to do. You know, they talked a lot about finishes and reimagining spaces. And to me, that says they didn't read the scope of work because the scope of work is almost all mechanical and engineering. So that, those were my feelings on those two. I did do a little digging into Ignite. They are the mechanical engineers. And I did talk to, you know, to Miles about that's, that they had changed, who had done it before. They have a stellar reputation. So that was my, those were my feelings. I didn't like the pricing on the one. I liked them. They gave a great, gave a great presentation. But I was like, how do you ever, I mean, to me, as stewards of this bond money, I like to know it's gonna be this percent every, so that's my, it's my take on it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bailey?
So you guys are owner's rep, right?
That is correct.
So you are there on site, capping on our behalf, right?
We're actually on site multiple times. We have the weekly or biweekly. Obviously, if there's construction going on, our teams.
You're looking out for our best interest, right?
That is correct.
That's fiduciary, that's agreement, that's the whole thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Because when I see these agreements that are based upon total cost, they get X amount of percent for what they do. To me, that doesn't, that lines itself that they're looking out for their own interest. So they can do $100 for this piece of equipment versus $50 for this piece of equipment. But because it's $100, they get more money.
Actually, the best part is right now their proposed fee is the 5.9%. We do calculate that at bid time. So when the bids do come in, let's say for bid pack one, we're not even sure what bid pack one is, but let's say it's $18 million. We make sure it fits in within the budgets. Then their fee is allocated to that, that what is board approved as cost of work. So there's no like, hey, I'm gonna spec it at 50, maybe comes in 100. So at the end of the day, the board's kept intact of here's the overall capital project, dollar amounts for cost of work. More importantly, here's the fixed fee from the architect for all the individual projects that ultimately tally up to that percentage. And so it's not on the full 44.3 million. There's probably about 30, $32 million of hard construction, mechanic, electrical, plumbing. There's probably about 30, $32 million of hard construction, mechanic, electrical, plumbing. There are some interiors, some bathrooms. Those would be that 5.9%. And again, that is fixed at bid day. So when the board approves Bid PACs 1 through 11, like the last bond, that's how those fees are allocated accordingly.
I'm interested, somebody being there, seeing this. Do we have somebody where, again, I think they're looking at their own best interest because they work on a percentage, right? So if they sit there and say, let's use gold versus diamond, somebody is there saying, well, maybe we can do better in terms of.
I'll give you examples. So Beachview has, or Beach has a 10.2 million dollar total budget. And as Mr. Steiner mentioned, we're going to work with, if approved, French Associates and Ignite. They know that program budget just for construction is $7.8 million. They have to design contractually to that budget. So if they are over and under, but the best part is, we're going to look at it as schematic design. So again, Mr. Steiner has done this a few times. Schematic design, adjust and modify. Design development, adjust and modify. Construction document, and then go out for bids. So you're going to actually see it as a district four particular times before you get to the bid packages. So you can actually tally it up. And if the district says, hey, I want gold-plated, you know, boilers, here's price A. But ultimately, the district's making those decisions. It won't be the architect. It'll be actually the district taking initiatives for that. Same thing with roofing. Do you want a 60-mill EPDM roof or do you want a 45-mill that's going to last you X? Luckily, roofs are the back part of the bond because I think they're not quite towards the end of the useful life. But that's the process that we're going to follow that I think the board should feel really good about. You're going to have two or three looks at this before you actually go out for actual bids. And again, that's why we said, give us a percentage. We're going to allocate the exact costs. And it's up to the district. If you want to spend more or less money, just let us know where either bid savings go to here or we want to do X, Y, and Z and improve it for Y. And those are the conversations we'll have at the board level throughout the whole process.
Are there any further questions?
I have a question, but it's not percent related to this, but it's related to bond.
Okay. Okay, well, let's just go.
Okay, so like, as with the old schoolhouse, is it completed?
Yeah.
It's a good question.
I can get you an update on the status. It's pretty much complete. I don't know the status of the actual final inspection, so that's the only piece.
So we're awaiting final inspection on the.
And actually, I was thinking that could be a great place to hold a workshop, so.
Be a great place to hold a workshop, right?
But we have to have.
But yeah, it's very nice inside. It's, yeah, it's done.
Because there's a particular car that's always parked there. It'll be there all the time, four hours.
Well, it looks like it's at the old schoolhouse. I would imagine that that's someone there for Redford Interface.
Which is right behind.
There's somebody already called on this. I don't know if there's a group home or something across the street.
Oh, it could be a new one.
Oh, okay. But I actually spoke to the school resource officer about that.
Okay.
Is that white trash or what?
She's like, what's going on at our building?
I've let Miles know about the light on in the building.
I was watching fireworks the other night, and they were in the Stucky parking lot. And I'm thinking, oh, good Lord, please don't burn our building down. And then I thought, oh, maybe it would be better. I'm going to be like, get on the, Miles?
Next summer, remember July 4th, right?
Great training opportunity for.
Can notify the fire department.
They won't be able to put it out.
And then there was part of me that wanted to go down there and say, excuse me, this is private property. Get off my property. But, you know, my son has to live there, and so I didn't want to cause trouble with his neighbors.
So maybe we can get a walkthrough.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I would love it because I saw it before we did the work.
And just so you know, I don't know how closely all of you follow it. We did do a post on Facebook that I worked with Jackie on because we had, we are trying to get, we're trying to see if there are people willing to donate gently-used old-schoolhouse items to outfit the classroom side of the building, so.
We're making a couple pickups tomorrow.
Nice.
So we thought we'd, I asked Jackie to come up with something catchy to post out there so we can try to harness some social media power and see what's out there. We do have a couple old-schoolhouse desks ready, and we're trying to get as many items as possible.
Have you contacted the historical commission?
Yes, actually, I'm meeting with Julie tomorrow, and they have some chairs at Donna Berlin.
Yeah, I thought they have desks too.
Yep, that's what I mean, desks, student desks. Yep, and then Ms. Crenshaw actually has a contact. We're going to pick up a couple from Ms. Wu-Jack.
How many are you interested in?
Pardon?
How many are you interested in?
I think if we get 15 in there, 12, or 15 at one.
Yeah, if we could, or even if like 12 to 15, it would outfit it nicely.
Have a question.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas Siders. All right, any further questions? This will come to a vote, so if they come up, you know, we'll be, we'll fire them at you then. Thank you. All right, moving on, Superintendent's Communications. Mr. Witt.
Just a couple of quick items this evening. I did want to provide a Where You Belong campaign update. Ms. Johnson and Ms. Dean, make sure you take your yard signs there.
Yes, thank you.
I brought them over. If anybody else needs additional yard signs, we have them available, so just let Jackie know. The other thing I wanted to do real quick is, I heard from some board members who have already heard the radio ads. I'm told that in addition to the local radio ads, a Spotify ad is also up and running now. For anybody that may use Spotify, you might catch it on there because it is direct, like marketed based on whatever metrics they are utilizing. But also, we do have a video ad as well that's going to be used in some different formats on different social media platforms and perhaps even certain search engines when you're on the internet. So I believe Kim has a 30-second clip that she can play, maybe full-screen version.
No, I saw our ad on Facebook. I was like, oh, shut up.
Yep.
Yeah. It might have been this. I might have seen this. I love it.
So again, just wanted to give a quick update. Our campaign is underway. Schools of Choice Enrollment is starting to draw a good amount of interest already, as well as some resident enrollment. Typically, we'll get a lot of schools of choice enrollment even throughout July and then into August. And then usually, the resident enrollment picks up in August and then unfortunately trickles in even past the start of school. For the first week or so, we have people that are trickling in that must not realize when school begins. But those things happen. And then I also wanted to share in your packet. I presented, and I just wanted to get your feedback on this. There are two different workshops that are highlighted around the topics of board governance. So I included those in your packet. I personally am leaning towards, and we can do more than one of these as we develop over time, but I'm actually leaning to the Working as an Effective Governance Team workshop based on that description. But I'm also open to the other one that seemed to be very topical. So we can get something scheduled for potentially the July Board Workshop or at least the August Board Workshop. We can work with MASB, but I need just people's informal thoughts on which session seems good. Because we did, and it's right there on the agenda, plan to have a board governance workshop in either July or August as a workshop topic.
Want to feedback right now?
Feedback now?
Yep.
All right. I like the Working as an Effective Governance Team. I think that's, I'd like to see us eventually do both, but I think when I'm reading this, when it talks about teamwork, unity of purpose, roles and responsibilities, I think norms, I think that's important to where we are as a board right now. That's where, that's my thoughts. Mrs. Martin? So you think working, working. Oh, you see, oh, you like the one up above.
Yeah.
Ooh. Okay, okay, okay.
And I will tell you, I mean, you guys can look at that. Those ones that weren't all expanded were really seem to be like ones that you might do after you do one of these two.
So like a building block?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, based on, based on.
Depending on what we want.
Based in part on some comments that were made earlier tonight, I would start with one of the two that are expanded here. And again, my recommendation would be working as an effective governance team. And then somewhere else, even still yet this year, I would actually recommend the power of board self-assessment as something down the road. But the focus now is trying to get something aligned for either later this month or the month of August on the scheduled workshop night for board governance.
I think that in order to move forward effectively, that we need to learn how to work together effectively in a positive governing body culture, as it says. Especially when having those hard discussions and things that we don't agree on.
Mr. Rosalsky, do you have a take?
I think the working as an effective governance team.
Okay, Ms. Miller.
Yes, I agree with the team with the board, working as an effective governance team.
Mrs. Dean?
I agree. It's a good place to start.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that feedback.
Mr. Bailey? Do you have a? I asked everybody else, so.
I don't see this as being exclusive. I see that more is better. Once you get into the rhythm of doing this stuff, I think it becomes easy. All this information is something that could have value within the school business.
Agreed.
Especially if it's best practices and it's already been worked out elsewhere, that this stuff works.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for that feedback, and then I will move forward accordingly. I also did, well, I don't know if I really wanted to. But I want, I'm going to share, I'll forward you guys a copy of this whole summary that I was sent today by the K-12 Alliance of Michigan. It's not really the best of news, but I was sent some talking points. We are now past the July 1 date, and the Michigan Legislature adjourned without taking any action towards a final budget, even though they're required to do so. But I will send that out, basically in a nutshell, everybody's pointing fingers at one another. So that's why nothing's getting done right now, and that includes not only the House and the Senate, but also the governor has an important role to play in this process. And right now, no one is delivering upon that. And what's most disappointing, that you'll see in here, if I can see it. There actually was a plan that fortunately didn't even get enough votes in the House, which the House currently is, the Senate is Democrat-controlled, the House is a Republican majority. And out of the House, there was actually a move to take, potentially take money away from the school aid fund in order to, and excuse my language, but our governor said it, so I'll echo the same, fix the damn roads. So to the tune of, I think, $1.8 billion that they proposed to take, again, out of the school aid fund and divert it to fixing the roads.
Because that's way more important than educating.
But to the credit of at least some House Republicans, they, the Republicans in the House couldn't even get enough votes to support that even as a House resolution. So again, a lot of finger pointing, kind of a stalemate at this point, and we'll see where we go. I really don't believe they'll probably be back doing meaningful business till probably August. There's a chance they could be back for short pockets of time here in July. But they also like to spend a lot of time in the summer, not focused on some of the things that they were elected to be focused on. And I will send this out since we are members of the K-12 Alliance of Michigan, and you can see all the talking points for yourselves.
I will kind of piggyback off of that and say, last week, I was in a Wayne County Association of School Boards executive meeting, and Mike Latvis, who is, works as a lobbyist, he works for RISA. He goes to Lansing. His pulse is on what's happening in Lansing. His opinion is that the closer this gets to September without a budget, the worse it is for us. This is not, that they haven't passed this is not good. There are people who, the governor really wants, well, there are people in the governor's camp that really want like cellphone use policy attached to the budget. There's a lot of qualifiers that they want to attach to the budget. Okay, we'll give you this much, but you have to do this, 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 and this to get it. And so a lot of, where we could see an increase, but it won't really be an increase because the money will then have to be used to take care of all these mandates that they're going to attach to the funding. It's crazy, it was a crazy time. He thought, they were working through the night last Thursday, and he thought he was going to have to go back to Lansing in the middle of the night. Clearly, they didn't come to a resolution, and it's just, it's kind of a hot mess up there right now. All right, moving on, communications received by the board secretary. Mrs. Martin? Interim Chief Financial Officer's communications.
There's none this evening. And just so you know, because of the contractual agreement we have with Maria, there will be meetings where it makes sense for her to be present. And because she is contracted at an hourly rate, there's going to be board meetings where it doesn't make sense for her to be here. So I just wanted to be clear. In fact, I actually think she is potentially still across the way at Keeler doing some other stuff that's probably more beneficial and meaningful, given the topics that were on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Executive Director of Human Relations and Labor Relations Communications. Did she leave any?
She missed, she had a major appointment today as well that most women at this table will understand because it was a haircut.
It was a hair, oh, see, listen, I just told them in therapy this morning that, I mean, hair appointments.
And actually, to be fair, to be fair, Mr. Taylor likes his haircuts too.
That's just the same thing that we'll see on the. Yes, so she did, you know, there are some, some human resources notes on our agenda. I'll just later dump, but. Where am I at? Okay, Executive Director of Curriculum and Technology, Mrs. Crenshaw.
Well, I came tonight. So you know I'm down here silently.
So you know I'm down here, silently. Um, um, so in regards to the budget thing, we did have a meeting last week with our grants people, and that is still being held up as well. So until we, they release all of that stuff, we cannot complete our consolidated app. So we're waiting on, um, all of that to take place too. Um, otherwise, I don't really have a whole lot more to share.
Question?
Yes.
Um, didn't we get our summer school enrollment numbers?
Um, not, I think we're close. I don't know if we're all the way there yet. But, you know, we had, we had a number of kids sign up, but we can't make them come.
So what happens with the grant?
We'll still get a good amount of money from the grant. So, we won't, we're not, I'm not worried about that, yeah.
Because it's like paraded based on-
And we still have a number of days left in the summer school, so.
So kids can still show up. It's not like, you know, if they don't come the first day, they're out. They can come whenever they choose to, and I think they're still reaching out to some families to find out, you know, if they're coming, but we're working on it.
I've noticed too, like, I'm, I follow, like, the, each school, each building's Facebook page, and I've noticed, just like in the last week, people saying, "Oh, can little Johnny still come?" Right? Like, there are people who still, um, are, are like, "Oh, I should have already done this." And so, of course, we're, you know, there's still families reaching out as well.
As summer goes on, I think they realize they've, like, something else-
I can't stand this kid, I'm sending him to summer school.
I'm not saying all that, I'm just saying, sometimes people, as the summer goes on, think maybe something else would be fun for them to do.
Listen, I, I have some granddaughters-
But I think at the elementary level, we've been at about 200 students.
Nice, that's nice.
So it's not a, the turnout is strong, it's just not completely, and I think we, we factored in up to like 240-something. So, but again, I talk with Ms. Birch frequently about it, and her and the staff there are doing a lot of follow-up, as Ms. Crenshaw has mentioned.
And it's total enrollment across both of the programs, so secondary and elementary, it's combined total.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right, moving on, future workshops, you can see them. Um, is there anything, somebody doesn't see there that, uh, let's, let's add to bylaws?
To the chair.
Mr. Bailey?
Again, I would like to see something where we discuss the leadership training that occurs within the district, including a rep or the student rep to the board.
All right.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Bailey? Okay.
As it relates to the student call to combat, I see we don't have a date for that. I know we were trying to house a new student call to combat coming into the new school year. Um, we're yet.
The hope is, we will have that at the July workshop for a follow-up discussion. I mean, we've looked at it multiple times now, and then if we're successful in navigating that discussion, it would be on the August board meeting agenda.
Okay, thank you. So we're looking forward for-
So that would be the August 4th board meeting.
So you said July 4th, that you specified, but I mean, um, July, I mean, August.
Board meeting.
Yep. And that would still allow us to kick off the school year with it in place.
All right. Um, and I'll say, I was thinking about this today, and it actually doesn't, doesn't have to do with workshop topics, but to Mrs. Martin's point earlier, um, how do, how does anyone ever know how to run a meeting if they don't run a meeting? It is my desire that at least the four officers, um, would chair workshop meetings. And so, like, one month it might be Mrs. Martin, the next month it would be Ms. Miller, the next month, because it is scary to, I will say, the first time you sit down in this seat with the gavel, if, if you've never run a meeting, it's a little intimidating. And so I don't want that for the person who will be present next year. I promise I don't. I don't, I don't want that to be, you know, a stumbling block, because it is, and then there, there's not typically an audience watching us, so if we don't do it exactly right, nobody's gonna be like, "Oh." And so it is good leadership to, um, to, um, have someone else chair specifically those meetings. All right, moving on, um, consent agenda. There were, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented? Moved by Mr. Osowski, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Johnson. Is there any discussion? Um, hearing none. Actually, no, I'm sorry, I have discussion. I have some questions, and you may not know the answers from our check register. Um, but, um, I'm concerned about just understanding what some of this is, and it may be that I have to direct them to Maria. But like, if you, on the second page, there's, um, a line item called, near, down near the page, game time poured in place, looks like it's $92,000. I'm curious as to what we spent 92, what game time is and poured in place, and what we spent $92,000 on. That's a lot of money.
I'm 90% sure that that is for the playground at Beach Elementary.
Okay, that would make sense. And then there was one for the marching band, and I just want some clarification, and I lost it. But it's, it speaks to uniforms for drum majors, is specifically what it says. I don't remember what page it's on. I'm looking for it. Which one? The next page? Oh, right, so the very next page, about the middle of the page, standby uniforms, bandsman uniforms, drum major, $36,933. Now, I know last year we approved the purchase of new uniforms for our marching band. Is that, is that what this is? Okay, because where it tripped me up is-
It's not just for the drum major.
That's where it tripped me up. I was like, wait, we're not, you know, even if we have four drum majors. I was like-
That's for the new uniforms that were talked about and presented even, uh, to the board.
A year ago. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, wait, that's, it's been like a year, and I know they're ready, and so I was surprised that we were just paying that, since I'm pretty sure they have delivery of them or have had for a while. Thank you. Um, so any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, action items. Whew, on number one, capital bond project, 2025 Capital Bond Project AE Services. Can I get a motion at the Board of Education at the recommendation of Jason Witt, Superintendent, approve French to provide architectural engineering services for the 2025 Capital Bond Project as presented? Moved by Ms. Miller, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Martin. Is there any discussion?
To the chair.
Mr. Osowski?
I have a question. Um, why is the board, are we approving the 2025 Capital Bond Project when we haven't even closed out the last one? I'm sorry. I don't want to see them, I don't want to combine them. I know their ways are not gonna be done that way, but we haven't even figured out what we've got open and what we don't have open. I don't want to vote on something that's starting another project.
Okay, I can tell you that the reason we're doing it is because we need to get working now on the 2025 Bond Project, so we can be doing at least some projects in summer of 2026. I know it sounds like summer 2026 is a long way off right now, but it's not. And it's my understanding that by the end of this month, the additional projects are supposed to be concluded on the 2021 Bond. And I will say this, in defense of those involved with the 2021 Bond Project, a lot of that work would have already been completed by the end of June, but because of the budgetary issues that materialize, we asked specifically for them to push certain work past July 1st because of our cash flow issues and the other things that we've been navigating.
So then, in theory, we should see a close-out presentation in August?
Sure, we can include that either at the August board meeting or at a minimum at the August Board Workshop. I'll talk with the folks on the team about that.
Mr. Osowski? Okay. Is there any further discussion? I too was concerned about that, I will say, about the, now we're overlapping and, um, it can, and, you know, that's a lot to start to run together and, um-
Well, just to let you know, we won't, the, the plan is, if we're able to successfully identify the architecture and engineer firm today, the next step would be then to go through a similar process, uh, to look at a construction manager. So we're not gonna like start hitting the ground right now, but we need to have an AE firm in place to continue the process that will include some more vetting and interview of multiple firms, ultimately for additional recommendations either in August or September, so we can keep the process moving along. But I understand the concern that was expressed, and we can make sure to, uh, not only close out things, but get a update presentation for the board relative to the 2021 project.
To the chair.
Mr. Osowski?
Can we get a list of stuff that wasn't done on the bottom?
Yes, if there was anything that wasn't accomplished that was set out to be accomplished in the 2021 Bond Project, we can make sure that that's included in the presentation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. This is a roll call. Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Dean?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Osowski?
No.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries six to one. Hearing were no items removed from the consent agenda. Call of the audience, public participation regarding non-agenda items. Hearing none. Uh, Superintendent's remarks?
I'm good.
All right, Board of Education, communication and discussion. We'll start down with Mr. Bailey.
To the chair.
Yes.
Ms. Miller, at the meeting where you mentioned something about talking with the board council, what did that entail? What was that regards to?
I can answer that question.
No, I prefer she can answer, if you don't mind.
Well, that's fine, but I'll go ahead and answer it. There was a lawsuit filed against certain individuals, and that lawsuit was filed, um, I'm sure you're familiar with it, that, because that lawsuit was filed, um, the district is representing, or actually has the obligation to represent the board members named in that lawsuit, as well as the school employees named in that lawsuit. And each of those individuals named in that lawsuit were provided with an opportunity to meet with legal counsel as anybody would do in the course of a legal action where they are named. So that is the discussion to which she is referring.
So each of the board members here participated in-
Each of the people named in the lawsuit were provided an opportunity to meet with legal counsel, as well as one individual not named in the lawsuit, who is a member of the Board of Education, because there's a chance she may have to make decisions down the road and had an opportunity to meet with legal counsel.
Why those?
Those meetings took place, uh, in the month of June, I believe.
Ms. Miller, would you like to answer?
No comment.
Thank you. Um, any further communication, Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mrs. Martin? Mrs. Dean? I, I don't have anything, I've, you know, I spoke to what I'm hearing from Lansing and about my, the future, um, workshops and chairing. Um, Ms. Miller?
No comment.
Mrs. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Osowski?
Saturday at Central Park, there's gonna be, uh, something for Terry Graham. We're having a memorial for Terry Graham.
That's right.
If anybody's available. She was a board member for a long time and-
Do you have that information?
I can try to find it.
Okay.
I got invited by her.
I think I did too, I'll have to-
Her granddaughter.
I'll have to take a look. So, so Terry Graham, she was a board member for probably at least one term.
No.
Two, um, and then she moved away right prior to you coming on, I believe. She moved away to Pennsylvania and, um, several months ago passed away very suddenly. And, um, what, she was such, she had such a heart for our kids and, um, so there's a, it sounds like there's a, a memorial service honoring her.
Yeah, Jeff, if you can find that information and just get it to Jackie, she'll send it out.
Yeah, yeah, she, she has a wonder, wonderful family. Wonderful, wonderful lady. Um, all right, uh, future meeting dates. Oh, wait, I need my, I need my calendar. Uh, July 22nd, Board Workshop, 5:30, right here in our, uh, wonderful meeting room. And then regular meeting Monday, August 4th, 5:30 PM, again, here in the meeting room. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Moved by Mrs. Martin, uh, second? Moved by Ms. Miller. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. The time is 7:09.